Clerk pro-call has been taken.
Yep.
All right, move on to adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion been made by Barrington.
Second.
Second by Mr. Besaw. Any additions or corrections? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and May fourth, twenty twenty-one council minutes?
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Zog moved, and Mr. Dorsey seconded. Any further corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Move on to for authorization to pay bills, Mr. Dorsey.
Your Honor, I move to authorize to pay the bills in the amount of seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Herter. Any corrections? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all. Public input. Hearing none, we'll move on. Standing in special committees, Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Thank you. Board of Public Works met on Monday, May third, twenty twenty-one, four thirty P.M. Meeting was called to order at four thirty. First item of business is wastewater treatment plant facility update. We reviewed, there were no questions, passed. The next was to consider an ordinance to remove the requirement to inject fluoride into the city's water system. Mr. Basset led a discussion regarding upcoming DNR regulation on lead pipes. The DNR is reducing the threshold for these regulations. And Mr. Basset does not feel New London would pass these new regulations. To reduce the leaching of metals into the water, many municipalities nationwide inject polyphosphates into the water systems as a corrosion inhibitor. To inject chemicals into the water system, separate chemical rooms need to be added to each well station. The current well houses already have fluoride injection systems at each station. Mr. Basset is recommending converted fluoride injection systems to instead inject polyphosphates into the water. Ms. Olson expressed concerns about removing fluoride in the city's water system, and talked about the benefits fluoride has on teeth, especially to youth. Mr. Basset stated that the DNR does not require municipalities to inject fluoride into the city's water system, and one well station already provides some fluoride naturally from the ground. Mr. Basset's concern is that utilities will not pass the next DNR threshold for lead in the city's water system, forcing quick and expensive replacements of lead-water pipes and potential mandates for injecting polyphosphates into the system. If that occurs, utility consumers will see drastic rate increases on their water bill. By using the existing fluoride pumping system to inject polyphosphates into the water system, the cost to the utility rate payers would be much less. Board members stated that they did not discount the benefits of fluoride in the system, however felt that coating the pipes with polyphosphates to reduce lead and other metals from leaching into the water currently outweigh the benefits of injecting fluorides in the water system, especially with anticipated threshold. Motion made and carried to bring that to council tonight. The next item, consider impossible improved street lighting installation in London Acres subdivision. Electrical site plan was reviewed for installing eight new streetlights in the London Acres new subdivision. That's the one by down by the high school. The cost would be roughly six dollars, forty-five cents per lamp, per month. Motion made and seconded to the council approve installing eight new streetlights in the London Acres subdivision. Motion carried. The next was consider a contract award for sidewalk patching. A bid tabulation for the annual sidewalk patching program was reviewed. Two bids were submitted. Summers Construction Incorporated provided the lowest bid, overall, forty-five thousand, six hundred dollars for the project. Motion made and seconded to move to council. The award for patching contract for the annual patching sidewalk patching program to Summers Construction in the amount of forty-five thousand, six hundred. Motion carried by all. The next was discuss possible partial size modification for the downtown riverfront property for retention of public and utility access. Mr. Hirth noted that he is working with S.C. Swiderski on the downtown reconstruction project. They are reviewing and modifying the partial boundaries of the downtown waterfront site for public access and existing utilities. Mr. Hirth requested feedback from the board on the modifications. Consensus was that the board agreed with the change. An official CSM will be presented to the planning commission at a future date. The next, approve a supplemental bid for the Werner Allen Reconstruction Project. A bid tabulation was reviewed for the Werner Allen Reconstruction Project, noting that an additional supplemental bid was included, piggybacking some work for the New London School District. These included parking lot and sidewalk improvements at Parkview School, a new sidewalk adjacent from middle school softball diamonds. These improvements have been approved by the London School District and will be financed by the school district. As the city holds a contract for the project, the city will need to approve the supplemental bid. The city will pay for the cost of the contract, and the school will reimburse the city for these improvements. Motion made and seconded to approve. Motion carried by all. The next was to authorize a city administrator to approve change orders for the Werner Allen Shawno Street Reconstruction Project in a total amount of up to fifty thousand dollars. Administrator Hirth explained that with many large street reconstruction projects, unexpected change orders can happen once you open up the road. Response time to approve change orders quickly is critical to keep the project on task. Mr. Hirth requested approvals to authorize change orders in the amount of up to fifty thousand. Motion made and seconded, bringing it to council tonight. In the director's report, the director's memo was included and reviewed by the committee. Service anniversary report. Paul Nelson Moore completed six hours, pardon me, six years of service on April twentieth. Jane Murphy, a part-time public services administrative assistant, completed two weeks of service on January twenty-second. The next, discuss meeting date that will be moved to Tuesday, June first, starting immediately after... That's wrong. The Board of Works should be at four thirty. Park and Rec should be immediately after. No further motion, the meeting was adjourned at five thirty-one. And to bring to council tonight. I move to consider waiving the rules to adopt an ordinance upon one reading.
Second.
Motion been made by Ms. Barrington, second by Mr. Herter. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to remove the requirement to inject fluoride into the municipal water system, which removes item thirteen point zero six from Municipal Code, Ordinance four twenty-three. This will be putting in the fluoride, pardon me, the polyphosphates.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Besaw. To adopt the ordinance to remove the requirement to inject fluoride into the municipal water system, which removes thirteen point zero six from the municipal code. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Next, I move to approve.
Nine by nine, and one no.
Sorry. Next, I move to implore to approve installing eight new streetlights in the London Acres subdivision. That's a Romanesco project by the high school.
Motion made by Ms. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Zog. To approve installing eight new streetlights in the London Acres subdivision? Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
Next, I move to award the sidewalk patching project for this year to Summers Construction in the amount of forty-five thousand, six hundred dollars.
Aye. Motion made by Barrington, seconded by Mr. Zog. To award the sidewalk patching contract for the annual sidewalk patching program to Summers Construction Company in the amount of forty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
Next, I move to approve supplemental bid A for the Werner Allen Reconstruction Project.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Herter to approve supplement bid A for the Werner Allen Reconstruction Project. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Steve, confirm. Motion carried by all.
Next, I move to authorize a city administrator to approve change orders up to the total amount of fifty thousand dollars for the Werner Allen Shawno Street Reconstruction Project.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington.
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Ritchie. To authorize a city administrator to approve change orders up to the total amount of fifty thousand dollars for the Werner Allen Shawno Street Reconstruction Project. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
And that is all I have tonight, Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. We'll move on to finance and personnel. Mr. Dorsey, you're up.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance personnel meeting met, well, Finance Personnel Committee met Wednesday, May fifth, at four thirty in the council's chambers.
Talk a little louder, David, please.
Member present were Dorsey, Fachey, Barrington, Roberts, and Besaw. Also present, Mayor Mark, Ms. Olson, Bernie Ritchie, Chad Horst, Judy Radke, Chief Schleder, and Jill Moss. Meeting was called to order. Motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Besaw to approve the amended agenda. Item three was changed from approved to discussed, carried eight zero. Police Chief Schleder presented an ordinance to authorize the use of citations. The purpose of this ordinance is to authorize city officials the authority to issue citations. A motion was made by Besaw and seconded by Barrington to recommend to council the ordinance to authorize the use of citations. In addition, the first reading would be waived for this ordinance and presented for adoption at the May eleventh council meeting, carried eight nothing. Zero. Human Resource and Payroll Coordinator Jill Moss presented a new annual performance review guidance document. The annual performance process is designed to promote communication and provide useful feedback about job performance. In addition, it can facilitate better working relationships, provide a historical record of performance, and contribute to the professional development. The committee thanks Jill for all her work facilitating this project. Finance Director Radke provided update first quarter, or first quarter twenty twenty-one Gold Cross ambulance budget. For the twenty twenty-one budget, the ambulance used a seven percent margin when calculating a subsidy per capita. As indicated in the report, the ambulance is currently running at a four percent margin. If this trend continues, this would be great news for the city of New London. The city will be able to reduce the cost in the twenty twenty-two operational budget. Finance Director Radke reviewed the monthly financial reports. Finance Director's report was discussed. Alderman Roberts requested the wheel tax be included as a discussion item with the possibility at the next meeting along with other possible funding sources. There being no public comment or further business, a motion was made by Besaw and seconded by Fachey to adjourn at five forty-six, carried eight zero. The next regularly scheduled finance committee meeting will be held in the council chambers on June second at four thirty P.M. I bring to you... Make a motion that we consider waiving the rules to adopt an ordinance upon one reading.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Dorsey, who seconded. Mr. Fachey. To consider waiving the rules to adopt the ordinance upon one reading. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
I also move that we adopt the ordinance authorizing the use of citations for enforcement of ordinances and outlining the officials authorized to issue said citations.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Fachey. To adopt the ordinance authorizing the use of citation for enforcement of ordinance and outlining the official authorized to issue said citations. Any further discussion on that? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
That is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Moving on to Park and Recs, Mr. Besaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Park and Rec Committee met on Tuesday, May fourth. Meeting was called to order at four forty-five. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda. Jim Jaeger addressed the committee with concerns at Taft Park Veterans Memorial. Consider smoking restrictions in city parks during public events. Chief Schleder led a discussion of a topic continued from last month's committee meeting regarding the enforcement of smoking restrictions in city parks during events. Chief Schleder explained that difficulty and the cost it would be to enforce the restrictions, and instead suggested posting designated smoking areas with receptacles and to politely ask visitors to comply during public events. The committee agreed that requesting people to smoke in designated areas was a positive way to start and to evaluate those results at a later date. No motion was made at this time. An update on Memorial Veterans Foundation Plan for Transferring Donations and the Inscription Program to the City. When the Veterans Memorial Foundation started the memorial project at Taft Park, their plan was to eventually disband and give the program to the city. The foundation has formally requested that the city continue the process to collect donations and have the names engraved on the memorial wall. Staff is working on creating a new flyer with the updated information for the city to accept donations, and will create a separate account for those funds. No motion was made at this time. Discuss the replacement of private fence of the city property at Taft Park. Was brought to the city's attention that C.N.R. Waterfront replaced a fence on the east side of their building in Taft Park. The fence covers dumpsters and storage for the business. Administrator Chad Harth agreed that the fence does make the area look better, especially in proximity of the Veterans Memorial. However, made the point that the owners should have contacted the city before making modifications of the fence placed on city property. Moving forward, Chad Harth recommended that an agreement be drafted between the city and the property owner, identifying that the fence is on city property, that the business will be responsible for maintaining, and the liability of the fence and items within the fence, as well as grant permission from the city or gain permission from the city for any future modifications of the fence. Alderman Zog, second, made a motion. Ritchie moved to authorize staff to draft an agreement to outline liability, maintenance, and future modification responsibilities of the private fence on city property. Motion was carried by all. Director's report and memo, the director's report memo was included in the packet agenda and reviewed by the committee. Years of service report, Paul Nelson Moore completed six years of service. On April twentieth, Jan Murphy, part-time public service administrative assistant, completed two years of service on April twenty-second. Chairman report, non-presented. Committee members report, non-presented. Future agenda items, discussion on a mountain bike park. Sculpture art on city property at the River Trail Park and downtown centralized dumpster next to Taft Park. Discuss next month's meeting date would be Tuesday, January first, twenty twenty-one, immediately following the Board of Public Works meeting. There being no further discussion, Alderman Zog made a motion. Alderman Fachey moved, seconded to adjourn, adjourned at five fourteen. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Besaw. Can you follow that up with the planning commission?
Yes, we can do that. The planning commission was called, meeting was on Thursday, April twenty-ninth. The meeting was called to order at five oh one. Gabbert made a motion, Steingrabber seconded to approve the agenda. It's carried by all. The April first, twenty twenty-one minutes were reviewed and approved by Walbrook and Steingrabber. Approved by all, carried by all. Vincent informed the committee of a front yard fence request submitted for two oh seven East Pecan Avenue. City ordinance requires approval from the planning commission to place a fence in the front yard. The request is to install a black powder-coated four-foot-high chain-link fence. The commission asked questions about connecting the new fence to the neighbor's existing backyard fence. Vincent will work out that out with both property owners. Motion by Mayor Herter, seconded by Gabbert to approve the front yard fence request. Motion was carried by all. Jackie McElroy, Cale McHugh, Madeline Chek, and Sean Felson from C.S. Swiderski LLC were present to provide information on a residential development they are proposing on a thirty-one acre parcel they purchased at the corner of House Road and County Highway S. Their conceptual site plan includes multifamily housing on the southern end of their parcel and a single-family subdivision, sub-development on the north end. The increased value of the entire development would be estimated at sixteen million. The main focus at this time was to have a preliminary discussion and get planning commission feedback regarding the rezoning that would be needed to allow the development to occur. Commission members asked questions about the existing zoning and the land used around the proposed development, and felt that the quality of the proposed housing units would not conflict with the current land use in the area. Since this was just a preliminary discussion for feedback, no motion was made at this time. A preliminary CSM was presented to the commission for a sixteen-acre parcel at the corner of Beckett Road and Ashcroft Street owned by Randy Retzloff. Parcel thirty-three, thirteen, thirty-four, and nineteen. The purpose of the CSM was to divide the parcel for future residential development. Motion was made by Basset, seconded by Mayor Herter, to approve the CSM request as presented. Motion was carried by all. Randy Retzloff petitioned the planning commission to consider a future land-use comprehensive plan amendment along with a rezoning resignation for the parcel to the corner of Beckett Road and Ashcroft Street. Parcels thirty-three, thirteen, thirty-four, and nineteen, to allow a multifamily development at that location. Chad Harth pointed out that there currently are multifamily structures directly to the west of the proposed development. Retzloff explained his current plan would be to place six multifamily buildings on this site with a total value of over six million. Steingrabber made a motion, seconded by Gabbert, to start the process to update the zoning and the future land-use map in the comprehensive plan to allow for multifamily housing at the requested location. Motion was carried by all. A site plan was presented to the planning commission for development by Midwest Properties in the Northeast Business Park. Midwest Properties indicated that they would like to begin construction on the site this summer. Motion by Gabbert, seconded by Steingrabber to approve the Midwest Properties site plan as presented. Motion was carried by all. A review of future agenda items are discussed. The next planning commission meeting is Thursday, May twenty-seventh, at five o'clock. Motion to adjourn by Gabbert, seconded by Steingrabber. Meeting adjourned by Chairman Besaw at five fifty-eight. Motion was carried by all. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Besaw. Move on to Economic Development Committee, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor. The meeting was called to order at four thirty-two. Kopitsky and Bishop to approve the agenda, carried by all. The February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one minutes were reviewed and approved by, approved by Zog and Fachey. Carried by all. Amy McGowan with Habitat for Humanity provided an update on the upcoming rock-to-block event scheduled for September sixteenth through the eighteenth. Apparently, they have about twenty-five homes that are scheduled for repair and are estimating over nine hundred local volunteer hours that will improve the city's appearance. Fundraising efforts are continuing, and all appears to be on track for a successful event. The committee thanked McGowan for the update. Margie Brown provided some history to the Grand Theater and how a group of individuals spearheaded the local grassroots effort in the late nineteen nineties to repair, at that time, a failing building. The structure was in such bad condition that the city issued a repair or raise order. The local group organized a campaign for a referendum to help pay for the improvements and repairs to the grant. The referendum passed, and a new formed group called the Friends of the Grant was formed. The Friends Group worked with the owner of the grant to make the necessary repairs to save the building. Unfortunately, today, the facility is once again in need of major repairs. At last month's meeting, Thompson stated that the city of Oshkosh owns their theater and has some type of private partnership to operate it. Brown stated that the theater in Oshkosh was built by the same architect as in New London, and both are called the Grand. Brown volunteered to contact the group in Oshkosh for more information. Kopitsky will reach out to the current owner of the New London Grand to see what his intentions are for future of the building. The committee will continue discussions as more information is gathered. The committee also discussed the funding of the annual Paca County Marketing Co-op contribution. In the past, the co-op was focused, a large part of their efforts in tourism marketing, and the city's contribution came from the Tourism Committee, their commission. Recently, the co-op is changing its focus a bit and is working on marketing efforts for residential and workforce recruitment, which does not line up with the Tourism Commission's goals. Moving forward, the city will need to evaluate if the new focus lines up with the Economic Development Committee's goals, and if the fund should come from that committee. Horst will invite Dave Thiel, Director of the Paca County Economic Development Corporation, for an update on the co-op's future marketing goals. Kopitsky provided business updates. Fifty Shades of Confidence at one oh three West Northwater Street in the old City Hall building is expanding. Two nineteen Northwater Street, recently renovated in two thousand and nineteen, is open for rent and available for eight hundred dollars per month, plus utilities. Midstate Tire and Repair LLC and Midstate Asphalt LLC located at five nineteen North Shawno Street is remodeling the outside of their building. And the owner of Gene Rose Sports Bar in New London, William Bond, passed away suddenly on April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one at the age of forty-seven. Bill had two bar locations, one in New London and one in Clintonville. He was residing in Texas when he passed. City Administrator's report. Horst provided some updates with the Downtown Riverfront Property and working with S C Swiderski on the plans for multifamily housing on that site. And Midwest Properties continues to work on their development in Northeast Business Park and have submitted their plans for their building permit. The committee also reviewed speakers and agenda items for future meetings. And local real estate agent Jeff Hanskey addressed and informed the committee that he was working with an individual from the valley to try to bring a new and unique venue to the area, to the area, as well as some efforts on a potential solar energy farm north of New London. The next committee meeting will be scheduled for Tuesday, May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, at four thirty. Zog and Olson moved to adjourn at five forty-nine. What do I do with that one?
A motion.
Make, oh, well, for this W C E D C?
Yep.
No, you don't have to.
No, need a motion?
No.
Just recognize that they're in there.
It's just there.
Okay.
Okay, and your W C E D C monthly report is in your packet. That is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Move on to minutes and reports that'll stand as read for the Housing Authority, Library and Museum, Police and Fire Commission, Utility, and Cemetery. Moving on, reports of officers and recent events and announcements to the public. We'll start off with the mayor's report. Look for a motion for, from council to approve and appoint to Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, Cemetery Commission, Library, Museum Board, and Housing Authority.
So move, second.
Move by Mr. Zog, seconded by Mr. Dorsey. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero. Moving on, we have the Poppy Days Proclamation. Poppy Days Proclamation. Whereas America is the land of the freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle, and whereas during a time of war and through evil acts of terrorism, it has become more apparent that we need to show our gratitude to all men and women in uniform, here and abroad, especially those who have paid the ultimate price so that we may remain living in a free country. And whereas the red poppy has long been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial poppy, those flowers made by disabled veterans of Wisconsin. Therefore, I, Mark Herter, Mayor of the City of New London, Counties of Outagami and Wapaka, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim May twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-one as Poppy Days in New London. Furthermore, I ask that all citizens honor those who paid that price by remembering them on Memorial Day, Monday, May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Thank you. And that is all that I have. We will move on to the Utility Manager, Manager, Mr. Bassett.
Thank you, Your Honor. Electric crews are continuing work at the London Acres subdivision on, after this evening, they'll be installing streetlights. I thank you guys all for that. Water Department flushed hydrants April nineteenth through the twenty-second. Water Department broke a valve while repairing a valve on Mill Street and fixed both of those on April twenty-sixth. M J Electric came and replaced five transmission full, for us, starting on April twenty-eighth. Two of those poles were on Wapaka Street, two on Highway X, right next to the boat landing, and one on Beckett Road. The P S C passed the utilities electric rate increase, and customers will see the new rates be in effect on June first, twenty-twenty-one. The completed well number five rehab that improved the pumping capacity from that well from five hundred gallons a minute, a minute to approximately six hundred and twenty-five. Electric crews started installation out at the industrial park in early May for the Midwest Property. We had a traffic signal struck in front of the post office on May sixth. Crews repaired and reinstalled that signal on May seventh. And I would like to recognize several individuals, Kyle Stewart for one years of service, Henry Fabasak for three, Matt Nidkey, Tyler Stray, both for six years of service with utilities, and David Murphy trumps them all with twenty-three years of service. Uh, that's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you all for your dedication and service. Move on to Chief of Police, Mr. Schleter.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had two anniversaries, Jeremy Mulroy, seven years, and Ben Schmidt, fifteen years. And then I would like to thank Sergeant Earl Rockdashiell. He's gonna be retiring here. He's got one more rotation and he'll be done the first week of June. So I'd like to thank him for over thirty years of service to our city of New London. He's a lifelong resident of New London and very dedicated to everyone here in this community. So, thank you, Earl, for everything you've done. I appreciate it, and you've been a great officer all these years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schleter, and congratulations to your crew and Mr. Earl Rockdashiell. I hope you, um, have a successful and happy retirement. Move on to Chief Wilfer.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. All I have tonight is some service anniversary recognitions. Eric Sager, twelve years, Aaron Ott, seven years, Andy Burns, seven years, Jason Fleese, five years, and Ren Scott, five years. Thank you.
Thank you guys for your service. And I skipped over to Director of Public Service and City Administrator, so you're up, buddy.
Nothing wrong with that. So first off, if anybody's interested in summer programs, uh, we have our two thousand twenty-one summer Parks and Rec Summer Program Guide that's just been released. It'll be handed out in the schools, so parents can check out your child's backpack to get yours. Otherwise, it'll be available at the library, Chamber of Commerce, Aquatics and Fitness Center, and then also online on, at newlondonwi.org. Uh, also a reminder that the Aquatics and Fitness Center will be closed May twentieth through May thirty-first. That's for our annual maintenance and cleaning regiment. Uh, we close it down for a week or two every year just to kind of clean the place up and get it ready for summer. So again, close down May twentieth through May thirty-first. Uh, as we move closer to the summer, our road reconstruction projects on Warner Allen and Shawno Street will ramp up. I just want to remind everyone that if you're looking for information and announcements on these reconstruction projects, we do have a page on the city's website specifically for these projects. If you go to the city's website, you can go to Departments, then find Public Works, and then click on the Projects link, and at that site, that page will have like any type of announcements or, or reoccurring type things that we need to get the public out. So if you want to know anything about the, the project, any detours, schedules, things like that, that's the location that anybody can go to for that project. And then lastly, I'd like to recognize an achievement from one of our employees. Uh, a few months ago, Casey Zempel, our video producer, submitted four videos that he recently created to the Best of the Midwest Media Fest Video Contest. This was a regional contest where video producers from Iowa, Illinois, Kansas, Minnesota, and Wisconsin submitted videos to this competition. This past year, a hundred and forty-four different videos were submitted for several different categories, and I happily, I'm happy to announce, out of the four videos that he submitted, three of Casey's videos received an excellent award and one received an achievement award. That translates into three first place and one second place awards, um, in this competition. So I'd like to congratulate Casey for those achievements and once again, highlight how special and talented he is with the videos he produces. He's rubbing elbows with some bigger, bigger cities and, um, sticking with them. So thanks, Casey, for that and, um, congrats. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. And thank you, Casey, for your work well, job well done. With that, I have nothing further, so we'll. Move to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. By Mr. Zog, second. Who, who second? Mr. Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.